Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. February 26, 2019, regular meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Ms. Westphal, please call the roll.
Carol Brown.
Priya.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown-McPage.
Present.
Valvina Nguyen.
Present.
Stacey Agar.
Entertain a motion, please, to approve the regular agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to add something on the board discussion. Thought it would be testing.
Board Discussion Number Nine.
And I'm sorry, what was it?
Testing.
It's been moved to add Item E to Number Nine, Board Discussion, Title "Testing." Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to add Item Under Board Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion passed. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move.
Second.
It moved in second. Discussion. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion passed. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
We're fine, thank you.
It's good. I had a lot of meetings this week, although it feels like it's been a long week, although it's only been two days, but a lot of good meetings. I was in Lawrence today, and I had a meeting with the, I think it's called TASK. It's the Technical Advisory Committee of the state, and under that we talk about testing and the validity of testing and what it looks like. And the great part is that we were able to have a seat at the table with the State Department when it comes time for testing our students at the state level and what it looks like, being the largest, they were saying that we were the largest urban until I know we're not the largest, but it felt good for them to tell us that. I didn't dispute it because I was being treated like a king and they were talking all these good things about how they can help Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, so I didn't want to hurt their feelings and, you know, take that away. But afterwards, I did share with Beth Foltz that, you know, we're not the largest. But we did have some great discussions around the state testing and what it should look like for the entire state of Kansas and looking at a growth model or what we call value-added. And so that's what I was sitting at the table. It just felt really good to sit around the table with individuals from Chicago. They were, as far as from California, New Jersey, and these were all statisticians. I think it's psychometricians, I think that's what they are, but to talk about it. And they asked for their thoughts from an educational expert, and I was like, oh, you're calling me an expert, so I'll definitely tell you how I feel about what it's doing or how it's doing. So we had a great conversation surrounding that. The greatest conversation I had today was more so putting some things in place for next school year. And so I was, had an opportunity to meet with Gear Up, and I know they'll be appreciative for giving a shout out to them. And so in Gear Up, they were sharing, any time someone says, well, we have money, I was like, oh, really? And so in there, we were talking about what we can do next year for our students and what it will look like for our seventh and, well, wait a minute, eighth and ninth graders. And so we were literally putting some things into place and talking about how they can make a bigger impact during the school day with some tutorials. And so we're definitely looking forward to that because their grant is for the seventh and it'll go seventh and ninth, and they follow that cohort all the way through. It's, I think it's a seven-year grant that they have. And so that was really, and I've had several other good meetings, but those were some of the highlights, and I think that was, you know, must be fitting for what we're trying to do with our student achievement. And so I am excited about how we're moving forward and what we can do for our students.
All right, thank you. I mentioned this at our Saturday meeting, so first, thank board members for attending our retreat and staff who did all the work on Saturday. But on Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the ceremonial swearing-in of the new Congresswoman Sharice Davis, and Schlegel Band provided the National Anthem, so that was exciting. It was held at the Robert Dole Courthouse, Federal Courthouse. And then I and a couple of other board members were in attendance yesterday morning when the, our own Whitney and the other team members of the Teacher of the Year group started out here. So she had already been recognized on the floor of the House with a certificate, but we always like to brag, so that's that. Other members, please.
Okay, I did attend the, on the 16th, the Black History Scholarship banquet at the Reardon Center. I also went to Topeka, Kansas on the 19th for KASB Workshop on Prepping for Teacher Negotiations. Those are basically the things that I've done. Been trying to set up schedules for me to be able to attend some of the elementary schools because that's one of my goals, is to know what's going on in those schools. And I have a couple set up, and I'll be informing everyone about that a little bit later.
Him?
Along with Shelley Beach and Matt and a math teacher from Schlegel and Ms. Brenda, we attended the LGBT Thrive Workshop at the Edwards Campus last week to learn more about how we can be fair and equal in treatment of all of our students. I went to the Black History Scholarship banquet, it was really fun. K-State had a thank you, their extension service had a thank you luncheon last week just so that we could meet everyone that serves us here in the county. That was very informative. Sumner had a parent breakfast where they were explaining to the parents how to access the, not the infinite campus, I guess the right word, and about the IB program. Teaching Fellows had a get-to-know-you-question workshop last week for people who are interested in that, and I attended that, and it was really, it was exciting to see people wanting to come into the teaching profession. It was really informative, the reasons they were coming. Kansas Teacher of the Year Tour yesterday was fun. I made contact with the Teacher of the Year from Leavenworth and how they are implementing trauma in their schools, and she's going to make an appointment for me to come visit their elementary schools and see how they're doing it. Since that's one of our wishes, I think it'd be really good to see other schools. Basketball games, of course, and don't forget tomorrow night, the Schlegel Girls are going to Substate here at home. Sesame Street and Communities was at Frank Rushin. They're going to be working with our kids, and I think that's a real good fit with our social-emotional learning at schools that we're doing. It's going to be a great asset. And this morning, at Central Auditorium, was the Middle School Band Festival. All of our middle school bands were there performing, and our bands are growing. Our teachers are really getting the students interested. We need to make sure we still support all of our music programs because it's so good for the kids. Thursday morning, Sumner Academy Auditorium has the Middle School Strings Festival. Starts between 9:30 and 9:45, so if you can come, you can see all the middle school strings. It's lots of fun. And there's probably something I've forgotten, but that's it. Oh, no, I have a letter to share with board members that I received in the mail today. I made a copy for everyone from the custodians. So that, now I'm done.
Other comments? Basically everything she said, I've done too. So I won't take up your time no more. So we attended the same activities. Thank you. Dr. Agar, any comments?
Not right now.
All right, thank you very much. Again, as you see, we do our very best to support, attend, and always be aware that our students, our faculty, our staff, our central office needs our support and the community as well. The next item, Student of the Month recognition, and so we have individuals to come forward to recognize Kimberly D. Earl from 500 Reach Virtual School as Student of the Month, and then we will proceed as a board to congratulate.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
I'm Linda Paul. I'm the Site Coordinator at 500 Reach Virtual Learning Center. We have been a part of this wonderful district since 2002. We started out at Indian Springs as a community learning center. District was right across the concourse from us, moved a little bit up the street when they said they were going to level that lovely building, and then five years ago, we became a virtual learning center currently located at 7704 Parallel Parkway. Registration enrollment is about 450, equally distributed between the 18 and underage students and the 19 and mature students in this program that we have. It is a pleasure to come to work every day at 500 Reach because you never know what's going to happen in the virtual world. Kimberly D. Earl is not the age of a typical high school graduate. She left J.C. Harmon High School before graduating because she was going to have her first child. Thirty-seven years later, on May 24, 2019, she will be graduating with a KCKPS high school diploma from 500 Reach Virtual Learning Center. And we know from the email I got yesterday, several of you will be at our graduation ceremony on May 24. Kimberly enrolled in classes through 500 Reach when the program was located at Indian Springs. Kimberly needed six credits to graduate. Kimberly acknowledges it took a long time to finish that first class. In her words, "Life just got in the way." During the time she first enrolled at 500 Reach, she raised six children, had 23 grandchildren to love, a foster mother to many more children, and has gone through other life situations with herself and her mother. It took many years for Kimberly to finish that first class. However, during the week of December 10, 2018, Kimberly did it. She finished the last two classes she needed to earn her high school diploma. Kimberly said in her own words, "I told myself I have to do it for myself, that I can do it, not for anybody else, just for me." What's next for Kimberly after receiving her diploma at the graduation ceremony in May? She reports she's thinking about becoming a registered nurse. Board, I'd like to present Kimberly D. Earl, Student Recognition of the Month.
And congratulations, taking as many pictures as you can.
We had one more person, but she is Ilkay Nigale Garcia, also one, the Student of the Month, and we have her, and we'll present her.
Thank you. Lee Garcia. Thank you. Mrs. Faust, do we have any community comment?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Oh.
Mrs. Faust. Ms. Westphal.
Oh, my, what? They didn't tell me that was.
Okay, we'll edit that one out of the.
I was wondering.
Technology is not my friend tonight. Mr. Covington, would you like to save me? You want to save me? Bond update.
Well, remember, we have, we should still read it. Remember, we're supposed to read it.
The protocol.
Yes, thank you. While they are approaching the microphone, please accept my apology. Prior to every meeting, we are to read the board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district and making mistakes. We agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. We agree to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. We agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and we agree to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Thank you. Now, Mr. Covington.
Thank you, ma'am. Board Member Superintendent, before you is the revised bond update. We have with us our business partners, and they're going to explain the spreadsheets that you have before you. I gave you a larger copy so you can see.
Thank you.
This is our first look at revamping how we do the bond update. It's a look at the financial status of the bonds, and then we're going to highlight some of the projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Schlick, and I'm the pre-construction manager at J. Dunn, and have been working with your staff, Doug and his team, over the last couple of years in providing all of the cost estimates as the designs have progressed. And tonight, we're going to kind of go through the sheet that we have as a team, been reviewing on a monthly basis, and give you guys an update of where the projected costs are for up to date. All right, so if you want to look at the first sheet, I'm just going to kind of go through what all these numbers mean, and we'll just kind of start. So really, this, starting with line item number one, kind of how this thing works, CM Construction, so that's really the construction dollars that were allocated for projects. Item number two is soft costs, which includes all of the design fees, the FFNE fees, all the furniture and equipment that goes into the buildings, as well as some of the low-voltage and technology costs that go into the buildings when they're completed as well. Line item three is the deferred maintenance, which is some of the maintenance projects that Doug and his team are managing on their side, which includes a lot of playgrounds that are getting installed at various elementary schools, some re-roofs, fire alarms, some projects that are more maintenance-driven, and his team has been managing those. Item four is the bond contingency, which is the contingency that the district set aside at the very beginning for this entire thing. And then item number five is the validation process savings. And what that is, is when we were hired on at the end of 2016, there was, you know, there was $235 million that was defined for this entire bond, and that spread over 70 different construction projects. Those projects weren't very well-defined as far as what the scope was. So we spent the first eight to 10 months working very closely with the school district and also the design teams to really better define those projects and what the scope should be to deliver the intent to the community. Through that process, we realized that there was about $6.6 million of savings from the initial anticipated workload in what those projects really should cost. So that was set aside, and at that point, all of the individual budgets for all of the projects, all 70 of those, was reset, and that's how we were going to track against those particular budgets at that point in time. The designs for all these projects then went through, they would kick off all the designs, and as the designs went through different iterations and the designs continued to develop, we were there continuing to estimate those projects as new developments changed. And then once the project's completed design, then that's when we would go out and actually contract for those particular scopes of work. And then line item six is GMP savings and overage. So once we would get to the completion of design and contract for a particular project, when Lee comes on a regular basis to present those GMPs, once those projects are complete, then obviously we reconcile and to see if there's any savings or overages from those particular projects. To date, there's only been two projects that are completely 100% closed on the books, and that's where, if you move over two columns, you're seeing that $284,000, that's the savings, additional savings that has come on those two particular projects that are completely closed. So as we move to the right there and look at column B, the current anticipated costs. So this is a more updated picture on where the total bond is to date. So like I said, as those projects continue in design, and actually, most of those have completed design and we've contracted for, which is column C here, the third column. As you can see, for construction costs, to date, where the anticipated cost for all the construction is $187 million, of which $159 million has been contracted, and a lot of that is under construction now. So as we move down to column B, you'll notice that that validation savings, there's nothing in that line item in column B, and I can't remember how many months ago, but when we, one, realized that savings, and then also as we started to buy out these projects, we bought projects out at much less than what we were anticipating from an estimated cost as well. So there was additional savings there. At that point, I think that's when Dr. Mather came before and the change to take West Middle School, that was going to be a renovation, to instead, it was a better value to tear that school down and build a new elementary school. Additionally, there was a greater need at John Fisk Elementary School, and that's when that addition, that wasn't part of the original bond, was incorporated in this project. So the great news is, is the projects have had great community support. We've gotten great competition that have realized additional savings, and those two projects have been really afforded into this bond. So as we move all the way down to the bottom, when you see the totals, so the total bond of $235 million, right now, we're anticipating $233 million, $268,258. So right now, we're anticipating an additional $1.7 million of savings that's unallocated at this point in the bond. Additionally, line item four on the bond contingency to date, the district has not, had not had to tap into that contingency, so another good news there. The sheets behind this is a more deeper dive and really kind of tells the story of all these individual projects, from where it was a validated budget to the project estimate, which is either a point in time of design or it could be the final estimate of that particular project before we buy it out. And then as you move to the right, you'll see the GMP or the contracted results, and then, of course, the variances on how those things project.
Questions on page one?
Sure.
Any? Please proceed.
Lee Moore, Vice President, welcome to everybody here. So the back sheets, as John explained, there's a lot of detail here. I don't think the intent is to go through the detail unless there's any questions on that. I was going to give an update on some of the particular projects that we're working on.
Please proceed.
Okay. So on, currently under construction, we have five projects, I believe, in the board docs, there's just some pictures and updates on that. But to highlight a couple of projects, John Fisk, if you've happened to go by there this week, we're setting steel out there right now. The critical milestone for that project was to hit pre-cast, to hit pre-cast the date of spring break because of the safety issues of installing the structural part of that building during school. So good news is, despite all the weather, we got the structural steel going this week, and we're going to hit that pre-cast date, so that's great news for that project. And when all the kids and staff come back from spring break, you're going to automatically see a building out there, which is going to be really cool. Now, that's assuming you give us good weather over spring break, okay? So I got to put that out there as a carrot there, but. Carlby Bruce, not so good news. We're in the earthwork process there, and as you know, we've gotten a little bit of weather over the last six weeks or so. So we are struggling a little bit on that project from a schedule standpoint. Hard to understand the impact right now because we're just trying to get literally out of the ground, but we are keeping Doug in the loop on that and taking advantage of every good day we've got. And once we get started on that project, hit some early foundation milestones, we can kind of better evaluate the schedule, but currently, we are being impacted by weather, so.
Before you proceed, Mr. Goheen, is there still an issue with the railroad issue?
No, only that there is a lien on the record, or not a lien, but a.
Want to talk into the mic, please?
We can't hear you.
Thank you.
You're asking about the railroad right-of-way that does exist on the property?
Correct.
Yeah, there still is, on the title, there still is a railroad right-of-way that we've been in discussions with the railroad to eliminate. Of course, it's a vacated right-of-way. There hadn't been a rail line on there in my memory. I mean, it goes through not just the property that the school's on, but a great deal of the surrounding neighborhood properties as well. So that's, it's, I mean, if you look at the rail line, where the right-of-way is, it extends beyond the property the school's on and well into other neighborhoods.
Okay, so what are we going to do with it on our property?
We've been in negotiations with the railroad to get rid of it, but we haven't reached a final outcome of that at this point.
So there's no timeline? Or have we not pursued it, or what?
We've been in negotiations with the railroad.
In negotiations, okay.
We have not reached an end to those negotiations with the railroad.
And the next communication is scheduled for when?
I don't know if there's a schedule for the next negotiation, but there, I mean, there've been ongoing negotiations to try to resolve it.
Questions for Carl Bruce? Please proceed.
Okay, so the other three projects under construction, Wellborn Elementary, Rosedale Middle School additions, and Gloria Willis Middle School, all of those projects coming along pretty good, no major problems there. Wellborn's really coming together. We're going to have the architect in there punching next month, and then your furniture starts installing in April, so coming along nicely. Rosedale, or Carlby Bruce, or I'm sorry, this is Gloria Willis. So we're in, we're slowly starting to get in to finish it in some of the areas. You're going to see gym equipment going in this week, and we're doing some seamless flooring and whatnot, but, so throughout the building, it's at different stages, but we're still looking good on schedule for that one. And then Rosedale, looking for some good weather to get a roof on, but we do have walls and the steel up, and we are slowly progressing internally with some rough in until we get the roof on. And again, we sure could use some good weather on that one, so. That's what I've got for the projects currently under construction. Bruny Elementary, trying to get going on that here in the next week or so, just putting some final touches on getting mobilized for that project. We took bids on West Park Elementary a couple of weeks ago. We're currently vetting those out, putting our GMP together. We should have that to your administration the first week of March. And then we've got nine buildings to work on this summer, and so we're starting to gear up. We've got all our contractors on board for those projects and working on our planning for the nine summer projects we've got, so. That concludes my update. If there's any other questions?
I have a question, and I.
I have a question and I apologize, I should have asked it to the first gentleman.
He's still here. It's okay.
That's great.
And I apologize. When you have money left over, you spoke of savings. So, based on how the bonds are written, what happens to that money if you had some left over? Is it required by law that you spend it on this or that? Does it go back to the school board general fund?
That's a question. Mr. Goheen, would you answer that, please?
Based on what has occurred before and I assume it's, it's totally legal, you can go back and add other projects to, to use up those funds.
Yeah, it doesn't go in, it never goes into the school district's general fund.
Correct.
It always stays in the bond fund. And so, if, if there is money left over at the end of the projects, they either go into the other ongoing projects or similar projects that you could add that would fit within the scope of what the work defined by the bond was.
Thank you.
Because I know early, we were, I asked about, were there any solar type of, for lack of a better word, solar panels or any use of solar? And the interesting to me, and I'm, I'm being sarcastic when I say interesting, it's like, oh no, much too expensive. Well, we're going to have to start thinking about energy savings and so, that would, I assume, would, would, would qualify as, as, as a use, but that needs to be early in the design. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, ma'am. Let me make another comment about the work of the nine projects this summer. We have a very tight schedule and right now, we are still scheduled to start right after Memorial Day, but pending whether if we have to extend school, we may face some challenges. But, right now, we're still good.
Questions, comments, others? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Or to the superintendent?
Dr. Faust.
Okay. I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education receive as a first read of the proposed changes of the student code of conduct as submitted by Lisa Garcia Stewart, Director of Student Services, as recommended by myself, Charles Faust.
You have your coffee. Okay, it's my coffee.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be before you. It's that time of year, I feel like we just completed our revisions not that long ago. This is just our first read, so what I provided you is a folder of the written, I know was uploaded in your board docs, Susan uploaded it, but I thought it might be easier to read the document, take notes, and then what I did was tab the changes in the green stickies so that it's easy to turn to that page. This year, I am proposing very few changes to the district code of conduct. As you have supported our initiative around trauma-sensitive resilient schools, we'll be completely looking at the transformation of our student code of conduct, but we first need to start the summer series training. So, I don't want to get ahead of that because it will have implications for our work. So, I wanted to take you through those changes this evening. There's no action for the board this evening except to provide me feedback as I return for the second, third, or any further readings after that for the code of conduct. So, on page four, the first page is that we want to make sure that our students are receiving the information such as this, as the data disclosure, since they're registering online, we don't want to miss any students. And so, every student has to affirm with their parent and acknowledge they've received the code of conduct. So, we thought this was another way to make sure they were receiving that. So, that's why we've added that to the code of conduct. The language hasn't changed, but it's important that we're making sure every student receives a copy of this. And since every student receives one, a code of conduct will know. A parent handbook, they only receive one per family. And anytime you need me to pause or stop if I go too quickly, just let me know. On page five, it just includes our table of contents. Again, that's just a change and the numbers will match as we move through the document, but right now, we didn't spend much time on the table of contents because we know that we'll have to continue to make changes.
Did you want to make comments on page three before you, you went?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I went right, they stood right together, thank you.
Media opt-out.
Oh, that was the one I just discussed, I'm sorry. The one following that was the one for our data disclosure. Did I get those backwards? I apologize. The first one is the media opt-out and then the second one is the data disclosure. Both of those were included in our student enrollment packet, but with the re-register and online evidence campus, we want to make sure the students don't miss either one of those. Page eight, the reason I included, I wanted to bring this to your attention, included the changes, there isn't any current changes as it stands in this document, it is signed. I did include our board president, but this is not something that you have created. So, I thought that you might want to create that and, and provide that to me or indicate that there are no edits at that time. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that it can be written from you.
I will and I will probably spell my name correctly.
Yes, sorry about that.
It's okay. It's a difficult one.
Thank you, yes.
Page nine.
Page nine is just the areas of our character development that we are aligning with our trauma-sensitive language and the three development areas. Our social-emotional character development committee worked on this page, again, aligning our work with the trauma-sensitive work. That continues on page 10 and that continues on page 11. Then, the next proposed change to the board is our code of conduct classification for trespassing, which is number 11. So, that has a strike through because it was added to class three and to include after-school hours. And that was the only proposed recommended change at this point for any of our incidences under each code, under each classification, I should say.
Can I ask, what was the rationale for taking it out under two?
Right, so, one thing we learned as a result of moving it back to two, because it was in class three, is that there were incidences where students were trespassing in the building after hours and then we didn't have a way to identify the classification because it's very specific when it talked about on-school property, but not limited to while they were on suspension. It didn't speak to if they were breaking into the building after-school hours. And so, that was the recommended proposal to the board, if that's a, if you're in agreement with that.
Tell us the page number again and...
So, right now, it was on page 17 in class two.
You jumped out to seventeen.
And that's where the strike through is and then it's proposed to be moved to class three and to include...
On page 22.
After-school hours, on page 22.
Okay. Next ten.
No, I, I, in my mind, I was thinking they should still stay there.
In class two?
Yeah, I, just me, because I, I work with some young people at my church and they had a problem. They kept going to one of our middle schools and we kept trying to get them not to do that because they just kept it up, kept it up, kept it up. And pretty soon, he ended up going to Car Valley and some other programs because he had an issue. Somehow, he, he was in high school, but he kept coming back to the middle schools and the elementary schools bothering the kids. And I just see that as a problem, not for a lot of kids, but for some, that it wouldn't hurt to also have that as a class to offense as well as the, you know, the third part would be a little higher to try to deal with it, instead of waiting to let it get so far out of hand. Because they were having a hard time trying to keep him away from the middle schools.
Sure. So, if I hear you correctly, if it's my understanding that you'd like for, to remain in class two for students that perhaps need some redirection and not necessarily at the level that it would be at class three, but include some language in a class three that allows us to address students that could be entering into the building without permission or breaking entry and trespassing in class three.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the current recommendations I have at this point, but I know that it's a large document and a lot to digest and so, if it feels feasible to the board, the next meeting we have is March 19th. And if there are suggestions or recommendations on or before the 8th, then I could have time to present that on the, during the March 19th board meeting, because we only meet once during that month and so, and I don't know if that feels like enough time between now and then to look at the document and provide feedback.
I think it is.
Okay. And I do regret the oversight with your name, Dr. Wood, I apologize.
I just have a question. I know that the suspension rate has gone up. Have we seen a difference based upon all the classifications we changed last year? Has it been helping with the environment in the schools and the teacher relationship? How have you seen that make a difference in, in the schools?
So, I actually have had some conversations and I know she, with Jen Holt, that has shared that she's had less calls around the code of conduct and a clear understanding of some of those infractions. I would say right now, it feels mixed. It kind of depends on the incident, like with trespassing, trying to figure out where that falls when you're working with students, when it's not necessarily them coming, as Mrs. Brown indicated, where they have actually entered into the building after hours without permission. So, I think we're learning more as we move along and we'll continue to do so as we begin to embark on our initiative. I do think that we, the level of not identifying the progression sometimes, we're really working to coach through administrators with that because we really want to not just jump to an automatic out-of-school suspension. And the assistant director and our coordinator for social-emotional learning is working on what we're calling a playbook or an administrative guide or process to help provide the support that administrators need. So, an administrator's guide to the code of conduct, because these are two separate documents. This is for students and parents and we want to also provide support for parents, I mean, for teachers and principals.
And also, could you clarify, when there's out-of-school suspension or short-term suspension, are we helping to ensure that that student is still learning? I, I'm trying to think of, last time, I think we discussed it, for a certain amount of time they were out of school, we would have some resources, but if it was short, we would not, based upon where we're trying to get them academically, have we added more support in those areas?
So, let me see if I answered the correct question correctly. If students are long-term suspended, it's without services, unless they are students who are receiving special education services and then by law, they are required to provide them services. And I'll look to Dr. Colvin to make sure I'm answering that piece correctly, but are students that are not receiving special education services that are long-term suspended, do not receive that right now without services? I know that Octavio presented to the board, it might have been now close to a month ago, around providing a program for students that are suspended and then they would maintain their educational services. And so, right now, that's a decision that is up to the board and I know Dr. Faust is talking to you about that, but that then would be that we could provide services to our students that are, are long-term suspended, but right now, we currently don't have anything in place.
Okay, thank you.
So, just for clarification, Dr. Faust, is that a board policy that we have not chosen to provide those services? And if we do desire, desire, do we proceed?
I would defer to returning.
Mr. Goheen.
For services that are not related to special education services for students who are on suspension or long-term, long-term, long-term suspension or expulsion, by law, you don't have to provide any services. That doesn't mean you can't, but if you're going to provide those services, there's a cost associated with it and you'd have to set up a procedure and a way to do that.
Correct. So, it'd be practice, not policy? It'd need policy?
Well, it'd be both. You'd want a policy saying what you're going to do and what you're going to provide to lay the groundwork and then you'd have administration come back to you with a procedure of what that would look like. So, for example, if you were going to provide, if by policy, you were going to change it to provide some measure of services to students who are expelled or on a long-term suspension, that would be the policy statement that you would come up and you might set a, some measure as to what extent those services would be by policy. But then, the mechanism for doing that, whether that's creating some sort of alternative school, whether it's creating some sort of homebound services, whether that's creating online services, whatever that might be, you'd have to have some sort of procedure and process and system set up that would come back for approval by the board with, with budgeting to go with it.
So, is that in the plan from our last discussion, which would have been a month ago, six weeks ago?
So, that will be in the budget discussion when we're getting to budget. So, safety was one of the priorities.
Priorities.
So, that will fall under safety. So, we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay.
To talk about our students.
Okay. Other comments? Questions for Ms. Garcia? And? So, we look forward to speaking with you again?
Yes, thank you very much.
And this is the first read?
First read only.
And please, board members, look over it, read, make comments.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make corrections.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
And we'll, we'll proceed with that conversation. Thank you.
Next item is that we ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve contract for Orton Gillingham training by the Institute of Multisensory Education for Special Education Teachers as submitted by Alan King, interim Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Michelle Coven, Director of Special Education, and as, as recommended by myself, Charles Faust.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust, board members. So, I'm here tonight to present this contract to you. There are actually two contracts associated with Orton Gillingham training that's going to be provided to special education teachers, special education administrators, speech-language pathologists, and special education teacher leaders. Okay? So, you have two contracts. The first one is comprehensive, so, the first five pages are the comprehensive contract. And this is the Orton Gillingham training for teachers in grades K to three. And Orton Gillingham is an evidence-based, multisensory approach to teaching students how to read. And so, it does meet the standards of the Dyslexia Association. I know that you've been aware of that over time. So, what we're looking for and we have identified is that we have special education teachers who need additional training to provide reading instruction to struggling readers. So, just as a point of comparison, so, dyslexia, although it does not have to be identified students with disabilities, those are the struggling readers. At this time, we're looking to train special education teachers, but there could be going forward an expansion to general education as well.
Okay.
So, you have two contracts. The first one, the first five pages are for the K to three teachers. We're looking at training 44 of them. And then, the second contract is the intermediate training and that is for teachers in grades four to 12. And we're teaching 29 staff in that group. It is a week-long training. Each one of them is five days and the trainer comes here. So, when we were looking at it, that's a lot more cost-effective than sending them elsewhere to pay registration as well as hotel food, et cetera. So, the trainer would be here for two weeks, one for the K to three group and then one for grades four to 12.
Okay. From the, I think I asked this question before, are you familiar with the, the recommendations from the Dyslexia Task, Task Force?
Absolutely, I've got them right here.
Okay. Does this, do you think that there, there could be more of a plan that you could, we could discuss as, as a, presented to the board, other than just telling us you have two days of set-aside training? I mean, from the conversation from some of those who are on there, suggest that with usage of this, I don't call it program, what could I call it?
It's an approach.
Approach.
Uh-huh.
That there, there could be maybe more success if, if a plan actually was, was more robust than just saying you have two days of training. So, could I get, could I forward you some comments from the members of the, of the task force and, and... I mean, from the conversation from some of those who are on there, suggests that with the usage of this, I don't call it program.
It's an approach.
Approach. That there, there could be maybe more success if a plan actually was more robust than just saying you have two days of training. So could I get, could I forward you some comments from the members of the task force and see if it fits the plans for use of this?
Okay. So yes, it's five days of training. So it's two weeks is how it was designed. And it was really, what we are trying to do is get a skill set developed in our special education teachers. And so there is a whole train-the-trainer model that I would like to explore going forward. But this was really just to give our special education teachers some training, very specialized training, right now, when they need it, so that we don't tarry any longer.
Exactly. So I'll forward those to you, Dr. Faust. Questions, comments for this, on this topic? Wait, sorry.
You mentioned dyslexia. What about autism? Will it kind of cover some things?
So Orton Gilliam is to teach students how to read. So it could be students of all disabilities who are struggling to read. So it's, it's a multisensory approach that breaks down reading to the word level. So we're really looking at decoding skills. So any student with a disability or without, who is struggling to decode, this would be an approach to use.
So how many, you said 29 staff of the 4 through 12. How many did you say, K through 3?
K through 3 is 44.
Forty-four.
And, yes, 44. So that is one from each elementary school. It is six special education teacher leaders, four special ed coordinators, and four speech-language pathologists.
Thank you.
And then at the intermediate training, so that's for Grades 4 through 12, it is all, will have a special ed teacher from each traditional high school, from each middle school, and then a few more to fill in from the larger elementary schools. And then, again, the special ed teacher leaders and special ed coordinators to support the work.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments?
All right. The money for this comes out the current budget, right? Not the...
This is the current budget. And special education has budgeted for reading intervention. So we have the money in our current budget to pay for the training.
Okay.
Thank you. Graduation requirements.
We'll need a motion to approve.
Excuse me. I move we approve the contract for Orton Gilliam Training. Been moved and need a second.
I second it.
I can't hear over here.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract for Orton Gilliam Training by the Institute for Multisensory Education, for special education teachers. Discussion. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close, no. Motion passed. Thank you. So item C.
That was Ms. Faust.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve changes to the student graduation requirements for the class of 2023 as submitted by Alan King, interim assistant superintendent, as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'd like to start by reminding you, first of all, of what the graduation requirements are for the students up through the class of 2022. And they're there, they're the ones, we've had those for several years now. There's not much difference. The big question we get is why half-credit, four-and-a-half credits of English? That one-half credit is a speech credit. So they take four years of English in that. They can take college courses to take the place of some of these as they take them. They've got 25 total credits are required. If they were to take a full load and have it all the way through and not fail any classes, they could actually graduate with 32 credits in time. We have that much leeway. So starting with next year's freshmen, who will be the class of 2023, we are going to reinstate, or we are requesting that we reinstate a world language requirement of two credits. I cannot tell you why that was dropped years ago. I know it was in place years ago, and then it was dropped. But we'd like to bring that back. And the reason for that is that we feel that it's important for students to be able to speak a second language to be competitive in a global society. So that's the, one of the main changes that we're making with the graduation credits is that they required a minimum of two credits of world language. Right now, the system offers classes in Spanish and French, but we will be exploring the ability to offer other languages as well. So we won't be limited. And we may have to get creative with that a little bit and maybe do some distance learning on that, depending on the requirements or the requests for the different languages that we have. Also, we want to inform you that we're changing our math alignment. For the past 20 years or so, we've used an algebra, an integrative approach of Algebra 1, 2, and 3. We're going to move back to the traditional Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2. And in fact, it really should be considered Geometry/Statistics. Statistics has become an important part of student math, especially being successful in business. And if you look at most geometry courses, they really push to fill a whole year's worth in geometry. So statistics will help fill that in and help make connections for the kids. So that will be starting with next year's high school students. Where, as I said, we're still requiring a minimum of 25 credits for students to graduate. And at least one of the diploma plus endorsements will still be required for graduation as well. Those aren't going away. And then just to update you, other adjustments that we're making at other grade levels, we are adding world languages at every middle school next year. That option. Next year will be Spanish at all of them. And then we can see about making adjustments in the future with that. The Algebra 8 graders this year have taken Algebra Geometry 1. That is going to be replaced next year with a course called Math 8. A lot of the teachers, and looking at our students' abilities, that they were missing a lot of the key math courses between 7th and 8th that will prepare them for Algebra. They weren't quite getting those. We had tried to distribute them among 6th and 7th grade. Those weren't working. The kids weren't attaining them. So we're going to go with a Math 8 approach. But for those students who meet the criteria that we have, they will have the opportunity to take Algebra 1 at 8th grade next year, those who have the ability and ready to. And that will require parent approval to do that as well. We're putting that in the requirements. We're also instituting the opportunity for students to take high school courses and get high school credit at the middle school level. It'll be like a precursor to the college courses offered at our high schools. So it will, it'll be a limited group. Algebra 1 will be one of them. Another one will be Spanish 1. If they take Spanish in their 8th grade year for a full year, and they, and follow the curriculum as they're supposed to and have a passing grade, they will get a, one high school credit for that. Any questions?
Do we currently have French and Spanish in all of our high schools?
Off the top of my head, I can't say for sure. It's on the books, but I'm not sure it's actually offered at each of the high schools yet or not. But it's, we have the ability to, but I'm not sure it actually is offered.
And a teacher that is teaching the foreign language, do they have to be certified to teach in that foreign language? Or do they just have to be fluent in that language?
They, they need to be licensed at the high school level. At the middle school level, actually, they don't. As long as they have high school license. When it comes to an elective, you don't need a strong, you don't need the content license necessarily, is what the state has informed me.
But at the high school level, they do?
At the high school, they do.
Is, is there a shortage of foreign language teachers?
I'm sure there's a shortage of teachers, or I'm sure there is. But we're pushing, and that's one thing that we've let our staff recruitment know about. And they're, they're looking for them already. Ms. Folks has already got that on her radar to be looking for that.
And you mentioned something about distance learning, where maybe if we have four or five kids at one high school that wants to take Chinese or something, maybe they can do it virtually with one teacher?
Yeah, we've got to explore and see what our options are. Chinese is a hot language right now. Everyone talks about wanting them to take Mandarin. And finding certified Mandarin teachers is a difficulty. But we'll work to see what we can do. And also, we might be able to tap into Community College help with some of this as well.
The other thing is, my daughter brought it up. She works in printing, running printing presses. And if you're going into like engineering or something like that, German is something you need to have, because a lot of the manuals and all the codes on the machines are in German.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. It's, it's an important thing with our pathways, that our students are choosing what pathway they'll be in. They also need to look at world language, which world language they would choose, not just because they want to choose one. French is a language that's offered quite often. And one thing it does, because it's so closely tied to Latin, it can be used for a lot of the legal aspects. So if kids are taking that pathway, that's a good one, because it would help them with some comprehension of some of the terms. With what you said with German, that if you go into an engineering pathway, it's a good idea to take German for, so that you're familiar, because chances are, you're going to come across some companies from Germany. Depending on what area you're working in, Mandarin is. Spanish, because it's such a highly spoken language here in the United States, that's a good one. There's a lot of opportunities for people who are bilingual in Spanish to get jobs. One of the areas that we're exploring is medical translators, which is an important job. The ability to speak at that high, that high level of technical terminology in another language is a high field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, since they can start at middle school, how high will we go up in high school? Will we go to French 4, French 5? Or that, or will we rely on the college partnership?
Depending on the kids. We can go, right now on the books, we have up through Level 3 of the languages. Usually, most of the kids who are rated for 4, they're usually eligible for college language. And so they, they go to a college language. It's, colleges usually look at, if you've had two years of a world language in high school, you're eligible to take the language in college. So some kids have been, we've been able to find that if they do well in three credits of Spanish at high school, they can actually test out of the first credit of Spanish in college.
And so like our juniors and seniors could partner with the community college to take them? Okay.
In fact, that's happening right now. Washington has that quite often.
Oh, good. Okay. And so the changes for Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2, can you explain that a little more? Will they take Algebra 1 first, then Algebra 2, then Geometry? Or will that be, or will they stop and take Geometry/Statistics? Or how does that look?
It would be, the traditional pathway of that is Algebra 1, Geometry/Statistics, Algebra 2. There is a group that were, that would like to pilot an approach of Geometry/Statistics first, and then Algebra 1, Algebra 2. There's some research out there that's really, in its infancy, saying that that's really, students who have that experience actually are more successful with Algebra if they've taken the Geometry/Statistics first. I, on a personal note, I took Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and then I took Geometry. And I actually helped the teacher teach a class half the time, because I was bored. Because in that case, Algebra 2, I mean, I can see where Geometry supports you, because I had covered most of the topics in Algebra 2 already. So having a foundation in Geometry is real intriguing, that there's some research out there that says kids would benefit from that. And so we're, we're looking at that. But we're, we're right now maintaining the traditional pathway.
Okay. And then for Algebra 8, what does that look like?
Math 8. Math 8 will be a bridge to Algebra, but it will cover a lot of the standards that, in more depth than the students currently have. Because what we had to do to, to offer kids Algebra Geometry 1 at 8th grade, we had to take the math standards from 6th through 8th grade and kind of compress them into 7th grade. So they didn't get it as in-depth. So as a result, some of the students would, would struggle with some of the concepts when they got into Algebra. So it's going to give the chance, will give the students more chance to go in more in-depth into those classes.
Great.
Into those standards, I'm sorry.
Okay, good. And last question. Why is parent permission needed for the?
To take high school, to take high school, to take a high school credit class at?
Right, right.
Part of it was, we, we checked with our surrounding districts to see how they did it, and that was one that they all, all required. And it's important that parents are on board, knowing that what you, what you want is that the students know that this is going to be harder than, than a lot of their other classes, because it's offering, it's at the high school level. They'll be taking the exact same class that they would in high school, so that they'll actually get credit for it. So it's important that they're on board with it as well.
So what happens if they not, they're not, and you clearly see that ability? What will we do for that student?
Well, hopefully, we'll be able to work with the parent to get that, that point across to them, because it's, you know, I don't want to necessarily override a parent, but I want to help convince them that that's, that's the way it would be.
Okay. I just didn't want that to be a barrier for our students to, if their parents may not understand the importance of maybe challenging a student for that, that area to be a barrier.
But we can, hopefully, we want that.
I think one of the issues is if you take the class as a high school class, it goes on your high school transcript. And so that's why parental permission's required. I think that's the reason.
And we would then transfer the credit, not the grade, so that everyone would start with a 0.0 when they first start. So no one would start with a 4.0 going in, and it would not level the playing field. So they would just take the credit with them and not the, the grade as for the GPA.
Okay.
I don't have a question, but I just, after looking at all of this, I think it's excellently together, the way you, the plan. Because after seeing middle school students for so long struggling with Algebra and Geometry, and there was a level of that foundation that they were missing by having this Math 8, that will allow them to get that. As well as when foreign languages went out of middle school, it left a void. And so now, we're coming back, and I can see the success of all of this. And so I want to thank you all for your planning, and it's great.
And I'm going to give a shout-out to Joey Jewett, who spearheaded this, and he's been a great find for us.
Thank you.
On the, I was talking to a parent today, and her young people attend Sumner. And she was concerned, because she felt that they should be able, if the kids at Sumner wanted to go to AVTS, have that as an option? Because a couple of the kids were saying they really didn't want to go to college, but they wanted to be an electrician. And she wanted to know, why can't they be given some of the same options if that's what they choose to do?
We can, we can relook at that. It's, it's been a tradition that, that Sumner, because of their IB program, they, they would stay that and say, it's considered a college prep school. But we, we can always reevaluate that as well.
That is in the works. We looked at what the College Board of Regency had stated, and we are looking for next year to offer dual credit for Sumner students also. Because what the, what the, the College Board of Regency was stating is that you can't offer an IB class for dual credit, which that's not what we were wanting to do. But there can be another class, let's say if it's English. And I'm just making that up. If there were English, then that could be offered as a dual-credit course, and they could get the college credit for it. But we can't offer an IB course for dual credit. So that's how that reads. And so I think we have misinterpreted that.
She talked about that too. They wanted just to give them as many opportunities as possible. And if they could go and take those two years at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, it would help them financially as well. And they wanted it to open up to everybody and give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I've been in legislature for 19 years, and every year, the requirement, suggested requirement of financial literacy comes up. And it just hasn't, it hasn't stuck on the wall yet. But where would that? But where would that, how that, would that just reduce the number of electives?
Well, financial literacy. Financial literacy, right now, we offer it within our economics class as a unit within there. And we also offer it in one of our CTE business classes. And that's where we address it, so students have that opportunity.
Right.
Now, that doesn't mean, we can't look at financial literacy as a option for that. Most of the resources I've seen around financial literacy have been designed as units, not in a full course.
Well, this is why I'm suggesting that the proposal always is to mandate that the State Board of Education develop the curriculum for standalone course. So if that ever comes to, into fruition, we're, go back to my original question. Would it just reduce the number of electives?
Sure.
That's where.
If it was a required course, yeah, it would do that.
Okay.
As I said, we've got the requirement of 25, and you can actually get up to 32 credits. Our, most of our kids graduate with more than 25 credits.
Okay, so you wouldn't have, you just add on.
It would just be one. Because a lot, they, they do a lot of elective credits to make up that difference. So that would be another one.
Any other questions? All right, what do you want? You want a motion?
A motion that we approve the grad requirement modifications as proposed.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, discussion? On a favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. We are at the consent agenda. Any members want to set aside any of the items, A through K? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President.
One of you move?
Go ahead.
Madam President, I still move.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the consent agenda, discussion. On a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Came into the bills. I just have a comment, Dr. Faust. As, and no specific questions other than, as the K-12 payables, AV equipment, some of the other telephones, computers. At this time of the year, it's always easy to look at funds that have not been spent and appear to spin down balances. In view of the fact, and this is not the first time I've said this, in view of the fact that, that school finance has not been resolved, we may want to consider encumbering some funds in certain funds, silos, that you can encumber as savings. Some, you must spend everything. You cannot carry over balance. But not to say you don't need new AV equipment, or new furniture, or new phones, or new computers. But moving forward, one would think that if there is a way to, to encumber some funds, it may not be a bad idea. So that was code for, if funds don't come, if, if the, if the school finance decision is not resolved, then we don't need to spin down. Because it's, it's, it's getting a little dicey, and it's getting late in the, in the, in the, the day. So those are all my comments. Questions, comments about any of the payables?
I move repair bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded, questions? On a favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Uh, we're under the, where is the, well, there, added. Board agenda, board discussion, board agenda timeline? Questions, comments?
I shared with, with the board, the first meeting in February, about Dr. Kat Matuka wanting us to come visit KU. Is, is anyone interested in doing that?
What date are you talking about?
Um, he doesn't have a date set. He just wanted to know if the board was interested. And I haven't replied to him yet.
Could you refresh our memory as to who he is?
He's a gentleman that was at the Diploma Plus in Europe Parent Engagement Reception. He was sitting to my left. He wanted to know if we would like to come visit the campus and the School of Education at KU. And he said, we've been good partners for many years. Maybe it would be time for us to get together and exchange ideas, or just a, a tour of the campus at KU.
Okay, specifically, which individuals will need to go besides board members?
He invited the board.
Okay.
Well, why don't, Dr. Faust, you and I look at some dates and then make some proposals? Because if you look at your calendar, while we may have one meeting in March, there's at the one side, two bold special meeting dates proposed perhaps. There's a special meeting day proposed in April. There is a special meeting proposed in May. So it, it may, we, we need to find some time to, but always willing to work with partners.
I mean, if we don't have time to go as a full board, I want to go up there myself anyway. So I didn't know if anyone else was interested in going. Because I know sometimes it's hard to get all the board's schedules aligned the same.
Correct. But we will look at some times and make some proposals, suggested times. The next item is board calendar, which then reflects our, our dates, upcoming dates. And Ms. Westfall, I know you had in here the, the assignments for graduation.
I emailed those to you.
Okay, that's where they were.
I'll post them in the library.
Could you please? All right. Members, item C, have you had a chance to review the, we can always use this as a first read for the committees, suggested board committees? And we can always refresh our memory of which board policy guarantees, allows, gives the board authority to, to establish temporary subcommittees. Please look these over. And Dr. Faust, were there any others that you had suggestions that we may want to add at later time?
The ones that, the three that I had, or the two that I had are in here.
Okay. All right, so, so between now and surely March 19th, we have the ability to review and send, if there's any comments, corrections, send to Ms. Westfall. Copy, Dr. Faust.
Dr. Faust, was, based upon your familiarity with committees, is that enough or too many? Or, or so, is it too many?
Too many, we have enough people on the board to.
Right, so based upon that, is there?
Capture some.
Yeah, if there's any that you have recommendations to condense or whatever?
Well, I think if we read over them first, and then, we, but I think some can be condensed or
Combined.
Combined, not condensed, but combined, to capture what we're, I think, I think we're speaking on the same wavelength. Yours are just.
And on an average, how many people would you require to be a part of each committee?
No more than three. So you could have two minimum, but no more than three.
So are we looking at three or four? Is that the goal?
Can't have four guys.
No, I'm saying the number of committees.
Oh, all right.
Three or four?
I would say three.
Three?
I would say three. Because if, do, let's say, if we look at how many we have, you're in, let's say, if you were two.
There's eight listed.
You're going to be serving on several committees.
So three.
And they usually meet during the day.
Okay.
So please read over and be prepared to make some decisions March 19th.
Or if we can think about like a top three, or combine, so that, so that we can have an idea.
That will be part of our discussion, yes. And forward your comments to Ms. Westfall, and/or to you and copy. Next item's D, potential cost saving in revising bond schedule for West Park students?
So one of the things that I wanted to talk about, as you know, we will be combining a couple of schools and elementary schools. So at William Allen White and Parker, we're going to be consolidating those two schools for the 2021 school year. Currently, we have at Parker, 67 students. However, 24 of those students have permits. So technically, there are 43 students that actually go to that school. And with our bond, we could have a, a savings of, if we went ahead and moved those students to William Allen White for next school year, we could have a potential savings of $491,000 before we would go into the remaining year. So those students would already get acclimated to the culture of William Allen White as they move into their new school versus having to train and do any of the, the culture and community when we first started to open the school. So we could, with the 43 students, we could go ahead and merge them next school year. But that's a discussion that I just wanted to, to bring about now that we're in the budget season. But there would be some language that we would have to convey and talk about in-depth.
I have a question. You said, how many have permits?
There are 40, there are 24 who have.
Permits for what?
Permits to go to that school. They're not actually assigned to that school.
Like daycare or?
They don't live in the zone.
Their parents or somebody worked there or something?
Are they at daycare?
Not a transfer.
Yeah.
Okay.
How many students total at Parker?
There are 67 total, 24 have permits. And 43 actually who are residents, who are actually zoned for that school.
Yeah, that makes sense.
How many classrooms do we have?
There's one teacher per grade level.
So five grade levels?
So in there, they, we have a principal, a secretary, two ICs, account, full-time counselor, full-time nurse, full-time social worker, custodian.
So you're saying this is a, a topic we will further discuss? But this is a, a, something we need, need to start thinking about?
Correct.
And, okay.
If we, we could, we'd want to do it, because we'd need to let the community, if we want to move that way, we'd need to let the community know and have a community meeting over there and speak with the community to give them updates, bring them up to notice where, what we're doing and how they're going to mesh with the two schools. Because, for instance, we have, where are we? 15 students, next year will be 15 students in first grade, 12 in second, 15 in third, 13 in fourth, and 12 students in fifth grade.
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay. So, would that overcrowd William Allen White's?
So what we were thinking is that we would, those students who are on permit, we would send them back to their zone school. And so if William Allen White, they have some permits also. So they would go to their zone school. And then those students for both would, there would be left room. And then they would all move together for the next year.
So not only will we have a further discussion, you will have to schedule it like a public hearing on the, the topic. All right. And you likewise will present some dates for us to, to, and, and further have a greater understanding if this, this, not if, when this topic becomes a community-wide discussion.
We would give you the positives and then the negatives.
And it would only be for the one year until they open the new school?
Yeah, so they, so next year, you're still going to be building. But then the following year, they all move into the school. So they're all going to go, both schools are going to then be apart. And then they'll move into the new middle school, I'm not middle school, the new elementary school.
One more question. Would that help facilitate faster building on that site? Is it going to help the construction timeline any if William Allen White?
I don't think it'll help with construction. It will be a call savings, we'll get a call savings of almost a half a million dollars.
Half a million, okay.
Okay, thank you. Item E, Ms. Humphries?
Yes. I would like us to have a report from whoever it is about how many tests our kids take by grade level. Like the name, you know, how many tests do our first graders take? How many do our second graders take? What are they called? What, what the cost is for each test? Is it required, or is it optional? Do all of the fifth graders take it? Or do the ELL students get excused from taking that test? How many times a year? And how much time it takes for the test? Some tests are allotted, what, 45 minutes or whatever? How much time out of their instructional time?
So I can answer some of those. So we, there's not a cost to the cap, that's a state test.
Yeah.
The MAP is a payment that's taken in the kindergarten. And when I was speaking with the individuals today, there's no correlation with the MAP and our, any state test. And that was from the experts. So there is a cost to that one. The ACT, of course, that's state, that one's free for us. IB, there is a fee, we pay for those. And PSAT, we don't pay for the PSAT. What we do and what we haven't done is give in students the interim. And we have to have a spot where we are looking at, how are we measuring up? Because we can no longer do the bless your heart. This student can't do it. And so we have to make sure that our students are being successfully challenged and making sure that our teaching is aligned to the instruction. So I know a lot of people are asking about, we test, we test. That's not actually true. What we do is we provide access for students. And so I get it, I understand. It's new for teachers because as you were aware, or you, I'm sure you're aware, there were years where, a couple of years where we didn't even take the state assessment.
Right.
We didn't, we never took the interims. So I'm not sure, and I shared with them, I'm not sure how we got away with that. How parents did not say, hmm, we should be testing our kids. How is it that we're going to be the number, that vision out there that says to be one of the top school districts in the nation, and we're not even aligning to the, to the state? So, you know, I'll take the belly aching and the crying about that. But we have to make sure that our kids are receiving a quality education. When you.
Thank you.
When you look at what was presented from the state superintendent, we're at 26. 26. Our kids are better than that. We have one student who is actually right now identified as gifted and talented in kindergarten. That's not true. That is not true. So, you know, yes, I'm going to keep pushing for it. I'm going to keep holding people accountable. You know, bottom line is, we can't get better by being the same. We can't continue doing what we, we're doing because it's not making any movement. We can't say that, you know, there's no options for our students. That's not true. That is not true. Poor does not mean dumb. So we need to have higher expectations for all of our kids. And we need to actually look at some of our surrounding districts. And yes, we should be looking at, what are the best districts doing? And I guarantee you, we're not measuring up. And so we've got to hold one another accountable for it. So I get it, people want to know about the testing. But there's no, when I think about it, for me, and I get real personal about this and passionate, I want the same for my children as I want for everyone in here. And so how dare someone say that I'm going to lower the expectations for the kids of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools? So I would ask those individuals who are asking those questions, are your children in those schools?
That's right.
Are they? Would you, would you allow a teacher not to teach at standard for your child? And so if they're not, so those are the questions I would go back. But we can definitely, and I'm not attacking, but I'm just wanting you to understand, I need for us to stand up when people are saying that we are not showing, I mean, adequate progress. We are actually, we stated that, you know, a level two was sufficient. That's not even what the state said. So they invited me to come back because I'm standing up and asking for things for our district when it comes to testing and accountability. We have to be held accountable. And the test is actually the end result. It's what you do on a daily basis. That can you, are our standards being measured? And are we following it? For instance, when we were looking at, when we were merging Algebra and Geometry, and our kids were still failing, we were saying, we're making it more rigorous. Well, no, we weren't. We weren't even teaching it correctly. Everyone else was teaching grade eight math. Everyone in state of Kansas, except for Kansas City. Everyone. Everyone. So when I asked, and they were saying those things, it was like, so yes, I had to make some turnaround methods, and it's going to feel a little different in the beginning, and we're going to ruffle a little feathers, but I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know another superintendent who had children in the school district, so I'm going to do what's best for my kids, because my kids are coming. And so we're going to make this a top-grade school district, and they're going to, I tell the principals, every time we meet, some are going to cross the finish line before we do, some we're going to walk together, some are going to drag across the line, but they're going to have to believe that all kids can learn. And that's not, I'm not going to let off the gas and believe that we're going to go any different. Because consistency is what drives the factor. And it gets, it gets hard, it gets tough, but, you know, just as I stated to our, our elected officials about, we shouldn't even be arguing about the money and how to educate kids. We shouldn't be arguing about, hmm, am I assessing the right? Because that gives us the, the direction. If the assessment comes back and it's at 8%, because we do have a school that's at 8%, eight, we have a school, has about 88 kids in it, it's the lowest performing school in our district, it's on the state list, and we've kept that school open for multiple years, and they have 8% in some of their kids, 8%. 88 kids, 8% are proficient. And we ask, why are we testing kids? I'm asking, why aren't we doing something about it? Why aren't we? Why aren't we giving them more AP tests? Why aren't we paying for that? Because that's what other school districts are doing. Why aren't we challenging them in our IB programs? Other school districts are doing it. When schools are at 8%, why aren't we asking questions on, tell me what that leadership is doing over at that school? Why aren't we doing that? So I do, I mean, I, I love the questions, but I want to ask the questions too. Why aren't we pushing back on these people who are asking these questions and saying, why don't you believe that our kids can learn? Because what this tells me is that, hmm, we don't believe that all kids can learn, whether they have a disability or not. I believe that all kids can learn, I'm not so sure that all people can teach kids to learn. That's what I want. So we have to change the perception on, what are we asking? Because our kids, and I'd say it, I'll say it, I think I said it in my interview, poor does not mean dumb.
And.
It does not.
Right.
It does not. So we have the resources, we have the resources, now, we are going to be transparent about the resources, and you're going to see more transparency about our dollar, but we have the money to educate kids. We're, according to the, the group that I was with, we are the top urban school district, number one urban school district. So we get federal funding, we get state funding, we get local funding, and, you know, a lot of this is through grants.
Okay.
But we have to educate kids, and I just want you to push back when individuals say that kids can't learn. And then I want you to ask questions as to, why aren't they learning? That's what I want you to do. So again, all of our kids, we expect, we don't segregate when it comes to ELL or special ed kids, they all have to take the state test, and we don't want our ELL kids to be lifers. So yes, we're holding them accountable, we're putting the director, she, we've talked to her, she's got to get in front of the leaders more often, because we have to make sure that our ELL learners are getting the exact same type of instruction as everyone else. They should not be coming in and not moving from year to year. We want to make sure that our ELLs are being proficient in their, their language. Just because you have, speak a different language does not mean that you're special ed. It does not mean that. And so we've got to change the culture and the way that we think about, because our goal is to make our school district one of the top school districts. So it's going to feel a little different. We can't continue down this road, but what I can tell you is, if we're going to do turnaround work, we're going to do turnaround work. And that's where I, I rest on that. So we do have to test, because we have to look at them, do we give pre-test? We should, we should. Teachers should be giving pre-test to see where their kids are, and a lot of teachers do that, and then sometimes they don't have to teach the entire standard, because the kids already know it.
They know what to teach.
So it's called good instructional practice, and Allen and his team are getting there. And they're pushing, and they know, that's why you saw a different of the revision. I ask the question often, why did we take foreign language out of middle school?
True.
Why did, why didn't we require, colleges ask or require you to have two years of foreign language? Why were we not doing that? Who does that? Is what I say.
That too.
Parents who, and parents, and I'll say it, parent, school board and superintendent who don't believe that kids can learn. We have to push forward, because you, I know that Dr. Nguyen knows at the community college and at the college level, they'll say you have to have two years of foreign language. That's been going on for years. But if we don't believe that kids can go to college, then we don't prepare them for it. So again, our, my question is, what are we going to fight for? And who are we going to fight for? And so I'm here to fight for the kids, we're going to do things with fidelity, and you know, again, how much is required? How, how much time does it require to test kids? It depends. If they have special needs, then they get a, they get extended time. If they don't get it, then you know what, we have to do some small groups and reteach it and retest them. That's what we have to do. But it is going to interrupt sometimes that, I was a teacher, I understand that it's not going to always run as pretty as that textbook tells you, because these are human beings. And so we have to stop sometimes, stop the instruction, back up, and then we move forward, but we have to do it. Yeah, that's, but again, and I'm not a fan of test prep, but I will ask if you have ever taken an SAT, an ACT, the LSAT, the, the, what's?
NCAT.
NCAT? There is some prep that you have to do, so what do we do? So educators are really big on, oh, test prep, test prep. No, I'm not the person to pull out a packet and say, do it, that's not what test prep means. So we have to, we're using buzzwords, because originally it was, we're overtesting or we're teaching to the test, and I stated that the state of Kansas doesn't even release the test for us to teach to. We teach to the standards. So I can diffuse that and back that question up, so they may want to go ask the state of Kansas, because I've been fighting and asking, I was like, well, other states actually release a test, so we can show parents, this is what you were tested on. So I can dispel that, but I can say that, you know, maybe we are making up for the time that we didn't put an emphasis on testing, so it doesn't feel right. But you know, in order to turn a district around, we do have to do some things that just don't feel good. It's not about edu, it's not about the adults, it's about the kids, the product, 23,000 kids, that's what it's about. We're going to take care of the adults, we're going to do right by them, but we're going to educate kids.
That's right. Thank you. And Dr. Faust, I applaud you for that, I really do, as a parent with children in this school district, by choice, by choice, there's a difference. When you choose to allow your kids to come here, and I supplement, and I've always said it, I always, I have to supplement what my children do not get from the class. And yes, my child is the kindergartner that is in the gifted class, the only one that I keep fighting for more, because I know that there's more out there. With that, I have three questions. One, you mentioned about parents knowing more and holding accountable, can we get a testing alert? Every time there's a winter problem, or a winter storm, or something canceled, we get thousands of texts from the district and phone calls, but I've never received a phone call lately about testing. When our child gets, so, so parents who are not aware wouldn't know to ask, because it hasn't been a normal part of alerting the parents that testing is even occurring.
So what I would recommend, in most school districts, the principal sends out a newsletter at the elementary, it's a weekly newsletter, and so they will tell you some of the highlights that are going on, and we can definitely talk with our EDs and make sure, actually even at the middle school and at the high school, that's where I'm saying, that's how we make useful of our website. And so we can give those calendar events of what's going on in the schools. Because there's a window of testing, could we send it from the district level? It just, but it wouldn't be.
It's going to be insane.
It'll be, it'll vary from here, but we can definitely, our EDs are here, so we will put that in, that'll be an expectation for principals to post that. They have access to do those call-outs. That's not necessarily, but, you know, hey, there's nothing, my children still get a, a letter from, which is a highlight of the week, of what they're doing in the, in the school, so we're updated. So again, I'm only asking for things that kids get in other districts, and it's, that's just best practice.
So the next thing is rescheduling for parents. So that final day of parent-teacher conferences, when it was canceled halfway in between the day, we've not gotten an update as far as when are parents going to be able to go in and check? And of course, we'll say, yes, you should have already checked with your teachers and been around to see the parent who works lots of hours and blah, blah, blah. But the reality is, when are we going to reschedule the time for parents to be able to meet with those teachers?
So we have to give the teachers a two-weeks notice, a two-week notice, and so the schools are already in conversations with the teachers about their, their next scheduled date, but by contract status, we have to give a two-week notice.
Can we get creative as far as giving parents an update of what they would have given if had they went to the conference?
Sure, that would be definitely something that we could, of course, you know, on our web, our, our websites, that we can do phone calls.
Calls and calling. And the other makeup day was last Wednesday, guess what we had? Snow. So now.
I didn't even know that was the makeup.
But we're trying right now to make it happen.
Well, thank you for the update. And then the cap, you mentioned the interim tests. When I did reach out to my child's teacher, I got the update for the MAP, was the cap interim taken as well, or?
So yes, we do give cap interims, however, there's not one for high school math, there's not one for high school math. The state does, they don't, they don't have one for high school math.
So, so, so we're still reporting the MAP for now?
Hmm, we're reporting the cap. So they will have interims in the ELA side, English side at the high school, they just don't have one for, and I think we're, I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing.
Well, for the parent conference that I went ahead and had with my child's teacher, I got MAP scores, and updated MAP scores.
Was that for the younger one?
Yeah, for elementary school.
Yes, that's, I'm sorry, because they, we still give the MAP, because CAP doesn't take place until third grade, so three through eight, and then 10th grade, I'll take the cap, that's state, that's the state testing.
Right.
And then we're giving the cap K through two, I'm sorry, MAP, MAP, K through two, and they're helping me. Okay, K through two is the cap, the MAP.
So when you're.
So I hear, so I do, uh, some of the, K eight.
That, that's why I'd like a list, so I could explain to parents, you know, what they're, what they're expecting, why the kids are taking that test at that age. Because you guys bring the stuff to us, but we don't have it written down in a form where we can, can look at it as reference. Oh yeah, the fifth graders take this test, and this is the reason. And, you know, we have this test available for our freshmen to take as a precursor to taking the ACT or something like that. What kind of, you know, if we do have a, a test prep class for the ACT at the high school, we, that way we can direct the parents, hey, go ask.
Well, I found out by talking with GEAR Up today, that we used to do the eighth grade pre-ACT.
Yes, we did.
But for some reason, we stopped. So we are going to start back, we're going to talk about that, and we're going to, I'm sharing all my plans for next year. We will start looking at that for eighth graders for next year, because that's a precursor, and we need to start talking about those things. Again, it's interesting that we get pushed back on trying to help kids, but when no one's helping, no one said anything. I don't understand.
That would be really good, to be able to tell the parent, well, in eighth grade, we get, your student takes this test, it tells us how they, how we think they're going to do on the ACT, so maybe you need to emphasize that work a little bit harder on this aspect, or, you're on track, or you're ahead of.
Well, the goal is, once we align the curriculum, actually teach the standard with, my favorite word, fidelity, then we will start to see movement.
Yeah.
And so, but we can, that should be something that teachers should be sharing and principals should be sharing with parents, what grades they test and who they test with. We can definitely do a FAQ, and we can put that out under testing and assessment. And when parents are, or when teachers are going over the, the MAP information with parents, they should be able to tell them what that means, and the MAP does do some plotting, but it doesn't align to the cap. So we're not doing a correlation with the, the cap. Cap is something totally different than MAP.
So do we need to continue to do a MAP, or is that something you're looking at?
That'll be for year three, we can talk about that one.
Thank you.
Any other topics that we need to make us aware of? Otherwise, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one more. The calendar for the Kansas School event that we had Thursday?
No, that was just yesterday.
So the, the teacher appreciation around about where they came and toured was not listed on the calendar? Is there a way that we can ensure that, that events and things that we have can be added to the board calendar? And then would it, would it be helpful if we just gave you that information if we don't see it on there? Okay, okay. I didn't know it was a personal invitation, I thought it was.
Yeah, we got a personal invitation in your.
But it wasn't on the calendar.
No, but we got one.
We like reminders.
Yeah. No, I don't take any reminders.
Motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. Hearing none. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Meeting adjourned.